Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez. Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, I am members of the President of the City Council of corporate annual meetings noted since 2014, which was filed in the State Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on the 27th of September 2013. We sent this document to the local district, all the plans for bridges to build in local homes, local churches. As all, please rise and have council and court's leaders prepare religious rituals.
Almighty God, as we legislate for our community, may the strong sense of justice and fair play be revealed in all that we do. Above all, when we seek our broken will, give us strength to follow it regardless of all human concerns.
Our pleasure in the vision of the life in the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, and our nation, are we God, the invisible, the great, the innocent, the poor?
All right, um, before we move into public speaking, we have a chaplain of our audience that has worked for many years in the city of Elizabeth and asked councilman Gonzalez to make a presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President of the Union, everybody. It is my pleasure this evening to honor someone who's been with the city almost for forty years working. He's been a resident all his life in the second ward. Uh, he's been an asset not only to the city and the residents of the city, to his neighbors, you know, and everyone that he's been in contact with. So, it's a great pleasure for me this evening to present this combination, this resolution, to Mr. Richard Laspinoso. Uh, Richard, if you could come up.
Richard, we have the city council of the city of Elizabeth. We learned, we learned kind of late that you were retired from our city cabinet, it was like the day before you were leaving. Uh, but after thirty-five years, um, working in the Department of Health and Community Services as the World Trade Director, and then from ninety-nine to two thousand and three, you were Managing Specialist in Majored Services, and then your last title as Majored Services Chief License Inspector. And Richard, you are dedicated, you've been a dedicated worker, worked diligently and always willing to help lend out that blood helping hand. Your body lasts for the rest of the city of Elizabeth, and therefore the city council. Hereby extend to you congratulations, best wishes. We express to you that you continue to have happiness, good health in the future, and enjoy your retirement. Congratulations, Richard.
I just want to thank all the members of the city council. Some of them have known me for many years, some of them just heard you. Also want to thank my parents and the characters who worked for us together, and all the wonderful people that worked with me, and all my bosses and coworkers. Thank you all.
All right, well now, open to public speaking, I'm already, any member of the city, any member of the audience, city resident, taxpayer, wishing to address the council, please step up to the podium, you have five minutes to address it.
Hi, my name is Lauren Petrie, I'm with Food and Water Watch, Central Jersey organizing. Uh, I wanted to speak tonight on the fracking waste ordinance that the council has offered on tonight. Thank you so much, the council, for addressing this critical public health issue. Uh, fracking waste, uh, contains toxic hazardous materials, expensive, clogging diesel, radioactive material, things that pose a real serious and permanent risk to public health from what are fuels or whatever. Uh, so thank you for addressing this issue. Uh, there's probably no number for speaking this speech, but we'll come up with a second in the room, a statement on fracking waste. From this point, it's all part of our health risk. Uh, so basically, municipal authorities, as you know, are allowed to protect themselves when they can, to keep this toxic waste out of their homes. Um, I'm not sure if you're aware, fracking waste hazard manager, uh, Elizabeth, Mark O'Connell, the only one who collaborated has taken an audible pledge that has been passed from two thousand and ten to two thousand and eleven, so let's leave that with the council. Uh, so it is even more important than taking this step to protect the community and keeping this from becoming a habit, where water waste and health are impacted. Uh, I also want to use those materials, fashion, uh, fracking waste. Uh, so we do encourage the Elizabeth City Council tonight to promote this ordinance. Thank you so much for addressing this issue. Uh, I think this is-
Sure, just right here, just right here. Show that you're willing to do it. I mean, what else would you suggest to the council? Come on, just state your name and address for our attorney.
Stephen, yeah, I was on the inquiry, I was on your side, and I got calls about this with the Sierra Department. Uh, who's behind you, a hundred and ten percent, Judge Hill, Mayor Shulman with, uh, very candid issue. The entire Sierra Department sees this as a critical issue, of course, the fracking itself is something, you know, has control over the danger there, and all different, uh, earth waste and destruction of water, it's also, because it's happening, there's arsenic, a lot of human matter embedded in the, in the rock structures that when they frac, they themselves, uh, the groundwater, all this, uh, hazardous material, so, at over years, the, uh, waters are spoiling, there's basically, it's a danger, not, of course, when you're seeing water supply, that, uh, there's a, so, topic, of course, they may, there's some pressure to allow fracking in the water shafts, water, that, so you want, this issue, Sierra Department, who's actually forces your actions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming up and spending some time on this. Is there anyone else who should address the council? Please state your name and address for our attorney, please. You've got to real close that right there for the candidate.
It's what you have, and it's all part of the justice, uh, if I knew, I was still a good justice, need to report soon, so please, you may be, um, being I knew, it's a puzzle, it's very important, that passes important, that, that ground water, I, so, for, um, for the, uh, the term of process, I hope they, um, they follow me, and also pass one of those cases, thank you very much, your time, now, Mr.-
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else who should address the council? CNN holds that portion, the one who made, will not talk character.
Ordinance number forty-four seventy-seven, rescind ordinance number thirty-six eighty, adopted January twenty fifth, two thousand five, which authorized the establishment of personalized handicap parking space for Barbara Anderson, nine thirty-four, and M Street.
Heard reading of ordinance number four-four seven-seven, anyone who should address the council, ordinance number four-four seven-seven. CNN holds that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number forty-four seventy-eight, amend chapter ten point forty-eight, section forty-three of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Office of Relocation, specifically provide for the repayment of relocation assistance or displaced tenants.
Heard reading of ordinance number four-four seven-eight, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, ordinance number four-four seven-eight? CNN holds that portion of the meeting.
He said that my colleagues, in the defense of creating conditions, communications, and reports of city officers. We're gonna move on to ordinances on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-one, and ordinance to establish chapter seven point twenty-eight, the code of the city of Elizabeth, entitled fracking waste, specifically to prohibit the treatment discharge disposal application to roadway for storage, wastewater, wastewater sludge, middle cuttings, or other byproducts from natural gas exploration or production using hydraulic fracturing.
Heard reading of ordinance, ordinance number four-four eighty-one, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's been moved in second amendment, are there any comments? Councilman Keenan.
Yes, when I first heard about this, uh, fracking waste issue several weeks ago, I was outraged. Uh, I've lived in the city of Elizabeth twenty-five years, and this can be one more example where residents of the city of Elizabeth have been treated in second, that's a, twice a city. We live here, the people who run those businesses that accept that waste, that fracking waste, and any other waste, should think about where they lay their head down. We lay our hands tonight in the city of Elizabeth, we want the cleanest, the safest environment possible, and in our mouth, actually, some of these businesses operate. Uh, we even consider it, except the fracking, so I think that the city's in a great hand here, by creating this ordinance, and the mayor, and also my colleagues, the city council, thank you so much.
Thank you, councilman. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Patricia Burrows, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have to agree, uh, a hundred percent with councilman. Joe Keenan just stated, and I also want to thank the mayor and the administration for making sure that our residents are safe and the environment is clean. Um, time for time again, we have to protect our residents, our soil, and, and just the environment from these type of companies that just want to make a dollar off our people, so, I'm glad that it's on tonight, and I'm hoping that it will pass, and I'm hoping that we be diligent in this fight against making sure the environment is clean. I mean, we see what is happening throughout America, throughout the world in terms of the environment, and it's just, it's just about making dollars, making money. And it should not be ever placed a price over someone's health when it comes to, um, making money, so. Thank you, Mr. President, because I know when this first came about, you were away, and you spoke to the mayor about it, and he was like, if you need to put it on, you gotta put it on immediately, so I thank you too, even when you were away, you realized how important this issue is to the city of Elizabeth.
Thank you, councilman. Anyone else?
I, I just want to, just make a couple of comments, first of all, I want to thank folks that came up to support this, uh, ordinance. Um, and for the residents at home, fracking waste has not been a sore in Elizabeth for about four years now. Uh, and I don't want anyone to think that's going on currently, because it's not going on. But what we are doing here tonight, and the majority of the, uh, um, entire city council, uh, the administration, all of the people involved in our government, agree that fracking waste is a problem. Uh, we agree that it's going to affect our groundwater, it's gonna affect our environment, and, um, it's important that this ordinance passes in our code, so that it will not happen, going forward. So, uh, at this point, I ask for a roll call.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on nine votes, first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-two, authorize amendment to chapter five point seven, point two fifty of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled ride control stabilization, specifically to extend the expiration date to December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Heard reading of ordinance number four-four eighty-two, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, comments? Vocal, votes, the councilman?
Yes, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify, I wanted to make sure, uh, there, other than it being extended, and all the changes we made?
No changes.
No changes, thank you, sir.
Anybody else? We're just extending the inherent ride control ordinance, which has been working in the city, uh, very well for the last, uh, six-
Said no changes. Thank you.
Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-three, authorize amendment to chapter ten point twenty-eight, point thirty, schedule one of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled no parking all times on certain streets, specifically to the entire length of Harrison Street and Crane Street, as well as stop signs at the intersection of Crane Street and Union Street, and the intersection of Harrison Street and Westfield Avenue.
Heard reading of ordinance four-four eighty-three, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-four, rescind ordinance number thirty-five forty-one, adopted September ninth, two thousand and three, to authorize the establishment of a four-way stop at Styles Street and Chilton Street, and further establish a three-way stop at said location.
Heard reading of ordinance four-four eighty-four, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
Moved in second amendment, are there any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-five, rescind ordinance number forty fifteen, adopted January twenty-seventh, two thousand nine, to authorize establishment of no stopping or standing in the area of one oh nine, one nineteen, Bayway Avenue.
Heard reading of ordinance four-four eighty-five, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, vocal, I'm sorry, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-six, amend chapter ten point eight, point ten, the code of the city of Elizabeth, entitled stop intersections, specifically to add a multi-way stop at the intersection of Alina Street and Jefferson Avenue, and the installation of a stop sign warning one hundred feet before the stop signs at said intersection.
Heard reading of ordinance four-four eighty-six, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, any comments? Come on, Councilman Baldwin? Don't have one.
Of course, I, I did back up, and, and they are revises.
I just, uh, wanted to make one comment, I know the member, uh, folks that live on Jefferson Avenue, um, they, uh, they're concerned about this intersection, people speeding through, and, and Councilman Baldwin is working hard to make sure that it's on the agenda, so we're hoping that, uh, once this gets passed, we'll be able to, uh, alleviate some of the speed limit on that line. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-seven, amend chapter ten point eight, point ten, the code of the city of Elizabeth, entitled stop intersections, specifically to add a multi-way stop at the intersection of Durant Street and Cross Avenue, from the installation of a stop sign warning one hundred feet before the stop signs at said intersection.
Heard reading of ordinance four-four eighty-seven, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, any comments? Councilman Sedan.
I just wanted to let the residents at home know that by adding this stop sign in that intersection, it's gonna help a lot of the traffic flow, um, when it comes to the kids crossing the street, it's gonna just make it safer overall, so I really want to thank my colleagues, um, and, and anticipation, for their support, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baldwin.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-eight, amend chapter ten point eight, point ten, the code of the city of Elizabeth, entitled stop intersections, specifically to add a multi-way stop at the intersection of Alina Street and Hurdon Street, for the installation of a stop sign warning one hundred feet before the stop signs at said intersection.
Heard reading of ordinance, ordinance four-four eighty-eight, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, vocal, I'm sorry, any comments?
Yes, President.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. President, I just want to say that I'm very grateful that we are able to hold this for this forum, and my colleagues are also supported. Uh, we've had a long time of having complaints about speeding vehicles up and down, and most were in particular, and there's a school right there at that intersection as well, so we're concerned about the safety of the kids, and, as well as the parents and all the pedestrians that travel in that area, and this is sort of gonna help to stop some of that speeding that's taking place, and maybe save for everybody that comes in through that area, so, so, thank you very much.
Thanks for your help, Mr. Councilman. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four eighty-nine, amend chapter ten point eight, point ten, the code of the city of Elizabeth, entitled stop intersections, specifically to add a multi-way stop at the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Atlantic Street, and the installation of stop sign warning one hundred feet before the stop signs at said intersection.
Heard reading of ordinance number four-four eighty-nine, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, any comments?
Yes, Mr. President, councilman.
Sorry, sir.
Mr. President, I just wanted to take my thoughts, and I hope they support this ordinance, uh, as, as you know, show up here, I'm a councilman, I encountered, uh, many complaints and, uh, many accidents around that intersection. It's right next to Montana Park, which, uh, hundreds of kids attend that park each year, so, uh, I'm just glad to see, um, to be able to hopefully, to ask, thank you.
Thank you, councilman, good job on this, vocal, please.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four ninety, amend chapter ten point eight, point ten, the code of the city of Elizabeth, entitled pedestrian crossing and block crossing, specifically to add six fifty-five Livingston Street and warning signs of pedestrian crossing.
Heard reading of ordinance number four-four nine zero, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four ninety-one, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Barbara A. Ramis Derrick Derrick Derrick, sixty-six Florida Street.
Heard reading of ordinance four-four nine one, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four ninety-two, rescind ordinance number forty-one forty-two, adopted July twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten, which authorized the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Stepford, Memphis, two oh eight, Kingville Street.
Heard reading of ordinance number four-four nine two, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read.
Ordinance number forty-four ninety-three, rescind ordinance number forty-four oh eight, adopted September tenth, two thousand and thirteen, to authorize establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Barbara A. Russo, five thirty-two, Fourth Avenue.
Heard reading of ordinance four-four nine three, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read. Public hearing in further consideration of the foregoing ordinance shall take place. The city council meeting is scheduled Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, at seven thirty P.M.
Ordinance number forty-four ninety-four, authorize the adoption of a capital ordinance in the amount of eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of three ambulances at two hundred fifty thousand dollars each, and the replacement of an ambulance patient compartment in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
Heard reading of ordinance number four-four nine four, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, any comments?
Mr. President.
Councilman Baldwin.
Yeah, thank you, I'm, I'm very, very pleased to see you, you wish your case, you move out of the room, and action, all machines possible, put this one together to replace those ambulances, if you, if you know, like, I do, I spoke to your director, you know, all ambulances really form a part, so this is why I brought this back, and I appreciate that, um, thank you so much, thank you, sir.
Thank you, councilman. I agree, councilman, it's worth it, these three ambulances that we have in our, our fleet, um, entirely made of replacement, and, uh, I'm glad that they're able to put forward some capital money, uh, to, uh, replace them with three new ambulances, and, uh, I thank the administration for that, and the residents, uh, who are probably to be serviced, um, by these three ambulances, we appreciate it. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on first read. Uh, the public hearing in further consideration of this ordinance shall take place at the city council meeting to be held Tuesday, October twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, at seven thirty P.M. Now we're gonna move on, as our ordinance is on final passage.
Ordinance number forty-four seventy-seven, rescind ordinance number thirty-six eighty, adopted January twenty-fifth, two thousand and five, to authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Barbara Anderson, nine thirty-four, and M Street.
Heard reading of ordinance, uh, four-four seven seven, on the final, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
Uh, moved in second amendment, any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-DeSey.
Aye.
Councilman Quester.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Baldwin.
Aye.
Councilman Mazza.
Aye.
President Quirrell.
Aye, ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance number forty-four seventy-eight, amend chapter ten point forty-eight, section forty-three of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Office of Relocation, specifically provide for the repayment of relocation assistance or displaced tenants.
Heard reading of ordinance four-four seven eight, on the final, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear this for both of us, President?
It's moved in second amendment, are there any comments? Are there any comments? Vote.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanian.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Grobel.
Aye. Ordinance passes on final passage. Now we'll move on to the next.
Introduce and approve the fiscal year 2015 municipal budget in the amount of $234,32,060. Fiscal year 2015, through utility budget in the amount of $21,500,000, and capital budget in the amount of $113,225,000.
Heard reading of the introduction of our fiscal year 2015 budget. What is your pleasure?
Move your hands for a vote, President.
It's moved and seconded. Are there any comments? Just wanted to give that home to know that the administration has presented to the city council a budget for fiscal year 2015, which calls for a zero tax increase. We will now consider it, and it will be on for the final vote in the next couple months. Vote.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanian.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.
Aye.
President Grobel.
Aye. Resolution passes unanimously.
Authorize amendment to fiscal year 2015.
Public hearing and further consideration to be held Tuesday evening, November 12, 2014.
Authorize amendment to fiscal year 2015 capital budget in the amount of $850,000, and authorize temporary emergency appropriations for fiscal year 2015 municipal budget in the amount of $46,659,625.
Heard reading of resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move your hands for a vote, President.
It's moved and seconded. Any comments? Vote.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gustafson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sedanian.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mazza.